Welcome to the City Council's special meeting for March 9th, 2015. I will call the lead to order and the roll call Gibson.
Mayor Slater.
Here.
Mayor Protim Campbell.
Here.
Councilmember Gottlieb.
Here.
Councilmember Henderson.
Here.
Councilmember Holterich.
Here.
Councilmember Huntington.
Here.
Councilmember Cheeks.
Here.
All presence, we have one discussion item this evening, C1, a potential library millage renewal question. And before we start, just a couple of things. This is not the only meeting that we will have on the library issue, so those that are watching and those that are here this evening, just pay... Keep in mind that this is not the only study session that we're going to have or discussion on this issue. And second of all, if we could from the council, we could give the presentation first and then ask questions after the presentation. I think that would be greatly appreciated. So with that, I will turn the meeting over to City Manager Gibson.
Thank you, Mayor and council and everyone who came out tonight to hear the presentation of the potential library millage renewal question. This is really, you know, as you said, there will be meetings after this, giving information and allowing the council to make the best decision they can for the library. But stepping back, it's really a continuation of our discussions with the finance ideas team and where we showed the financial information for general fund, capital fund, and library funds. And so this will be a continuation of that, giving more information. And you'll see the library director and her team have put together an excellent presentation that A, answers some of those questions from the F15 meetings and the council meetings, as well as presents the forecast for the future. So Kathy Russ is here with her team to give the presentation.
Okay, well hello everyone, I'm going to jump right into it. And we're going to start with a look at the funding history of the library. I brought up six years to show you. Fiscal year 2009-10 was the last day that the Troy Library had seven days service. You can see in fiscal year 2012, that was the first year of the library millage. Over in 2013-14, there was a slight increase in expenditures. That was due to the addition of the technology coordinator position, excuse me, the marketing coordinator position and the technology specialist position. That was also the year that furlough time was eliminated for city staff. And then we have our current year, the 2014-15 year over on the far right at $3.5 million. That includes several capital expenditures, including the replacement of the light panels, the drive-off book return, and the Phase 1 of the signage project. I just want to point out the millage revenue is on that top line. The library does generate about $250,000 of its own revenue, mainly through overdue fines and fees, penal fines, state aid, and so forth. So before we go on to the budget, let's answer some questions that were posed by the financial ideas team and that came up at the city council meeting that occurred after that meeting. At the financial ideas team meeting, we showed you this slide that had the millage rates of all the Oakland, not all, but most Oakland community libraries. There were some questions about that, and rather than show you a budget comparison, because that tends to be apples and apples, what we thought we'd do is show you a cost to average household and hours of operation. You can see over on the high end on the left, the Baldwin Public Library is up over $700. That's really an aggregate, four different communities pay into the total to fund the Baldwin Public Library. So truly on the high end, you have Bloomfield Township Library at an average cost of $432 per household. The smaller number represents the number of hours that the library is open. So when you see two numbers like Rochester Hills and Southfield, what that means is the library is open in Rochester's case, 71 hours per year during the school year, September through May, and is closed Sundays in the summertime. So let's talk about some statistics. In 2014, over 1.3 million items were circulated, checked out, from the Troy Public Library. Eighty-eight percent of them were checked out to Troy residents. One hundred and thirty thousand of them were electronic. So eBooks represents about 10% of all the items that are checked out with the library. In 2014, over 20,000 people attended programs, which is an increase of 60% over 2013. Programming is one of the big reasons why people use the library. In 2014, almost 450,000 people visited the library's website, which is a 12% increase from the previous year. All told, in 2014, 64.2% of all Troy households had a library card. You all have a handout in front of you, and there's some detail on this handout that explains how we arrived at those numbers. And there's also some additional supplemental information, which I'll point out as we go through the presentation. So let's take a look at library card, who holds library cards at the Troy Public Library and take a deeper dive into non-resident usage of the Troy Library. In 2014, over 46,000 people had cards at the Troy Public Library. Over 37,000 of those cardholders were Troy residents, which leaves about just under 9,000 non-resident cardholders. That's 81% of the entire database. Everybody who holds a card, 81% of them are Troy residents. That's a really good number. But let's take an even closer look at that non-resident cardholder number. When you factor in those who work in Troy or go to school in Troy, that number jumps to over 42,000 cardholders at 91% of the overall total. That is a great number. The Troy Public Library is part of the suburban library cooperative. The reason why the library is part of a cooperative is for many reasons, actually. We get group discounts on library materials, deep discounts on supplies, and vendors that we all cooperatively purchase from. It also allows Troy residents to use other libraries and share their resources. So when you factor in people who have Troy library cards, who are residents of our co-op communities, that number, oops, sorry, jumps to 99%. That leaves only 558 people who don't have any association with Troy at all. Those are really good numbers. We wanted to go even deeper into non-resident use of the Troy Public Library. So what we did is we looked at the Baldwin Library in Birmingham, the Bloomfield Township Public Library, and the Rochester Hills Public Library. And we looked at residents of those communities who use the Troy Public Library. In 2014, residents of those communities held a total of just under 5,000 library cards, and they checked out 14,020 items from the Troy Public Library. Troy residents use other libraries too. They use them for many reasons. They, sometimes geographically, another library is closer. Sometimes that library has something that is checked out with the Troy Public Library, so not accessible. And sometimes the Troy library just doesn't own it. No one library can own every single item that's out there. So when we looked at Troy resident use of the Baldwin Library, the Bloomfield Township Library, and the Rochester Hills Public Library, we discovered that 3,500 Troy residents are using those libraries. They checked out 22,000 items. So what this says to me, these numbers are equitable. I really feel that while non-residents are using Troy Library, Troy residents are using other libraries, this is not out of balance and the system is working. Again, it's about resource sharing and making as much available to Troy residents as we possibly can. This chart shows you a representation of a quarter's worth of checkout. You can see 48098, in the last quarter of 2014, they checked out over 139,000 items. It's a little lower in the southeast end of Troy at 107,000, but it's pretty evenly distributed across all of Troy. Now let's get into the budget. We took an eight-year look at revenues and expenditures at the library's current millage rate of .7 mills. The reason why we projected out over eight years will become clear in the next slide. So revenue from 2015-16 all the way through 2022-23, you can see that revenue increases from just over 3 million to just over 3.5 million. That's good news. The operating budget, the operating expenditures, stay below the revenue line, which is also good news. In this case, the operating expenditures represent the cost of staff, the cost of computers, utilities, supplies, the things that we need to run the library. Unfortunately, when the cost of library materials is factored in, you can see that that expenditure line does exceed the revenue line. Library materials are important because in a sense, they're the library's bread and butter. They're the primary reason why people use the library. What library materials are, is basically everything you could possibly check out of the library, books, audiovisual materials, eBooks. It's also databases and all the electronic services we provide, which you can access from home. So it's very important to have a materials budget, and it's important that that materials budget stays current. So as you can see, at the end of eight years, the gap between the revenue and expenditure line is about $206,000. Here's why we projected out eight years. If current Troy library fund balance was used to offset that gap between revenue and expenditures, that fund balance would last eight years. So that again, is something to consider. We could use fund balance to offset that gap between the money that the millage is bringing in, the money that the library is generating from fines and fees, and the cost of library operations plus the materials budget. Now let's talk about capital needs. You all have in your handout a breakdown of some capital expenses or some capital projects that the library is desperately having done. We contracted with John Tagle, who is a smart user, to assess the library building top to bottom and tell us what was critical, what needed to be done, how soon did it need to be done, what priority did it need to be done, and how much did he estimate that it would cost. Per Mr. Tagle, the library needs about $428,000 of critical building repairs. You can see in your handout that it could be phased one of two ways, but the total is $428,000. And we phased that over four years. In addition to those necessary building repairs, the library also needs new carpeting. The carpeting currently in the library is about 14 years old and is very worn in some places, there's some trip hazards. It's desperately in need of new carpeting. $107,000 to complete the weight finding signage project. We are at Phase 1 this current fiscal year. This would complete that weight finding project with the remainder of the building and as well as outside signage. Last but not least, $41,000 for new security cameras, so the library could be included on the Troy Police Department's security system that is going into all of the city buildings, and we would like to be a part of that as well. So when you add everything up, all of those capital needs, the total is $726,000 for all building repairs. Again, phased over four years. So when we come back to our slide and you see the revenue line, the expenditure line with the operating budget and the library materials budget, when you factor in the cost of those capital needs, the gap widens to $386,000 at the end of those eight years. Now, we've already established that one thing that could be done is to offset the cost of library materials by using the library's fund balance. So that takes care of some of that cost. What would need to be decided, should you go this route, is how to address those capital needs. So two options present themselves. On the left, option one, you could renew the existing millage at .7, use library fund balance for the cost of library materials, and the city of Troy could provide a capital subsidy to the library, an average of $180,000 annually. Hence that 726 number divided by four for four years. Alternatively, the millage could be renewed at .7, library fund balance could be used for library materials. The millage could be increased to an additional .04 mills for a total millage of .74. .04 equates to $180,000. That's why, that's how we arrived at that number. This presentation would not be complete without me telling you about some of the pressures that are facing Troy Public Library. The building and the capital needs of the building certainly put some pressures on us, but there are some additional pressures as well. And first is in terms of staffing. When the library is at full employment, it has eight and a half full-time positions and 67 part-time positions. The half position is that of the marketing coordinator, which is shared with the city. From January of 2012 to January of 2015, 31 staff members left the Troy Public Library. 22 left for full-time jobs. Four left for personal reasons, two moved out of state and two retired for health reasons. And five left for part-time positions with increased pay. That's a pretty significant turnover. So breaking it down, 31% of staff left Troy Library for a full-time job between 2012 and 2015, so far this year. Seven percent has left for part-time positions with increased pay. Another huge pressure, when you have a part-time staff, a primarily part-time staff, and Troy Library staff is 90% part-time, the increase to the minimum wage really has an impact. In January of 2014, the minimum wage was $7.40 an hour. January of 2015, it went to $8.15. In January of 2016, it's going to increase to $8.50 per hour, and it's going to go up every year after that. So you can see the progression of the minimum wage and the impact that it has on the library's personal services budget. By the end of the 18-19 fiscal year, I'd project an increase of, it looks like about $400,000 in terms of the personal services budget. So now we come to the discussion about the millage in 2015. I'm going to turn this over to Ms. Dixon, so she can take you through the timeline.
So this timeline represents dates that would involve the millage question being placed on the November ballot for November 2015. Currently, that ballot contains the mayor's race, three council members, and then one partial-term council member. The first three dates there represent the meetings that would occur prior to the deadline for the language filing. So those three meetings would be when council could discuss and vote on how the language would look on the ballot. The second date there, August 11th at 4:00 PM, is the deadline for when I would have to submit the language to the county court for placement on the ballot. August 20th, that's the date that we would be mailing the bulk applications for absentee ballots to the voters on our bulk list. September 19th is the 45-day federal deadline where I have to start mailing ballots out to voters that are in the military overseas. So the next three dates are the three meetings that would occur prior to that August 20th date or prior to that September 19th date, where council could vote or discuss and vote on whether or not to send out an explanation mailer regarding the millage question. And then September 28th, that is the date that I would have to mail the bulk of the absentee ballots for the November election, so that the mailer, if it were going to be done, would need to be done, or would be advised for it to be done prior to the September date.
Thank you. Okay. A question that does come up from time to time is the question of Friday service. The library was last open in seven days in the 2009-2010 fiscal year. It started with six-day service with the start of the fiscal year, July 1st of 2010. But it does come up from time to time about restoring Friday service, so I wanted to show you some options for that. Before we do that, though, let's look at some constants. If the library were open Friday, I expect that there would be about a $12,000 increase in revenue, primarily from fines and fees. The expenditure increase would be around $16,500 a year. That's primarily in the areas of utilities, supplies, janitorial costs, and building maintenance. If the library were to be open again on Fridays, I would recommend a $20,000 a year increase in the library materials budget. I think with increased use of the library, there's more wear and tear on materials, there's more demand for materials, so I would recommend that. In our first scenario, the library's hours of operation would be from 1:00 until 5:00 PM on Fridays. That would actually be a five-hour per week shift, because like any retail store, there's some work that needs to be done before the library opens and there's some work that needs to be done after the library closes. So a five-hour shift. We would hire 16 part-time positions, essentially substitutes. They would be hired just for Friday service. We could, we would have them checking materials in and out, helping people with computers, and having them answer reference questions. The cost of that would be $106,713 per year. In the second scenario, the library would be open a full day from 10:00 until 5:00. Again, the same 16 substitutes hired, same core services, checking materials in and out, you know, helping people with computers, answering reference questions, and hired for eight hours per week. And the question may come up, why don't you just give existing staff more hours? And if you were wondering, that's a great question. The reason is, the library staff is hired for 20 hours with the per week. With the turnover, staff often picks up extra shifts to cover for someone who is ill or on vacation. What happens is we run up against the limits of the Affordable Care Act. We cannot give people on a regular basis 30 hours per week, or they become considered a full-time employee and we would have to pay them benefits. So to add those hours to existing staff means two things. We would be in danger of running up against the limits of the Affordable Care Act. And really, more to the point for me, is I would have to schedule many, many staff members for seven days a week. And I don't know many of them who would want to do that. So that would be difficult, hence the need for the substitutes. That would cost about $140,000 per year. There's some drawbacks to this scenario. Number one, no programs with that skeleton crew, with that substitute staff. We really wouldn't be able to offer the robust level of service that we do the other six days of the week. The staff, as I mentioned, they'd have very narrow rules. They'd be limited to just working with public service desk. They would not be ordering materials, planning programs, going out into the community, anything like that. Lack of familiarity with the library, if they're only there one day per week for whether it's five hours or eight hours, they would not be as familiar with the library operation with the city of Troy. I'll be honest with you, these are not insurmountable. Over time, these could be overcome. We do a great job of training people, we could work with this. What I worry about the most is the burden on the full-time staff. Many of my supervisors are already supervising 15, 18, 20 part-time staff members. To add another staff on top of that, whether it's three staff members, four staff members, six staff members, really places a burden on the staff. It also, I think, compromises communication and it affects customer service, because things start to break down the more people you have per one supervisor. You can equate that to a classroom, if you will, teacher-per-student ratio. In the third scenario, the library would be open a full day from 10:00 until 5:00. We would add four full-time staff members, one part-time staff member, and we would take two part-time positions and turn them into full-time positions. This would make the library not only have Friday be a day like all the other days, but the whole, all seven days would be fabulous. We could go out into the community, we could do some outreach to businesses, we could do more with the schools. We could go out to people rather than expecting them to come into the library and really start meeting those objectives in the strategic plan that we have wanted to do and the community says that they want us to do. The cost of this is just under $461,000 per year. So, as Mr. Kishnik mentioned, and as the mayor mentioned, tonight, we're here looking for input on the following questions. Should a dedicated library millage be used to fund the Troy Public Library? Should six-day library service be continued? What should the dedicated library millage rate be? And how long should that dedicated millage last? With that, that concludes my presentation.
Brian, I just want to point out that there was 20 minutes exactly in that presentation.
I'm still back at the familiarity maze trying to find.
Did you make your way through there yet? We asked her to stay at 20 minutes and she was like, right on 20 minutes. Thank you. Kathy, I'm sure there are going to be some questions from council, but... Any questions, or who wants to be first? Mayor Protim Campbell.
Thank you. I don't see any numbers. You don't have any numbers in there that I see to fix the water-filled basement? Is that something that's in there?
The city's engineering department and building operations room and a group effort have taken a lot of steps already to fix the water-filled basement. It's an ongoing project, but we've gotten, I'd say, three-quarters of it fixed, so that is not included in those numbers.
Thanks.
Councilman Henderson.
Something we talked about last week, and I didn't see it in this presentation, was just about eBooks and the checkout there. Can you just kind of quickly explain the cost compared to a hardcover copy book?
Sure.
And why that, at first brush, seems like a good idea, but the cost isn't necessarily a good idea?
Sure. I'm so glad you asked. We had a conversation last week about the cost of print materials versus the cost of eBooks. And just to give you an idea, the hot book these days, the hot fiction book, is called The Girl on the Train by Paul Hawkins. We can get a hardcover copy, hardcover print copy of that book for about $15. We can get an eBook copy for $84.99. There are currently 708 holds on that item. So we are very limited into the number of copies of the eBook that we can buy and that we should buy. Because once all the fuss dies down, you know, you don't want to have spent thousands on this one title. So the question, the further discussion came, you know, why is it like this? And my answer is honestly because for these publishers, for the people who make eBooks available to libraries, because they can. There's no industry standard across publishers. So Random House, for example, may have more, lower pricing, but after the item's been checked out 26 times, they make you purchase it again. Other publishers may not make you purchase a copy again for 26 checkouts, but they'll keep the price at $85. So another thing to know about eBooks is that we can purchase one eBook that's a license, so only one of you can have it at a time. It doesn't mean it's unlimited usage of that one license, because it is a licensed product. So in order to accommodate everybody at this table, we would have to purchase 10. 10. So it's a real balancing act over how many copies to buy. Print is, still remains the cheapest option. Hardcover nonfiction is usually about $25, but that's all part of the library materials budget. So councilman, did that answer your questions?
Yeah. Further to that, the collections aspect of that is a little bit different too, because you don't, those expire, so we don't have the overdue book fees that we can collect.
Correct.
In the event somebody forgets to turn.
Correct. One of the things that I have been monitoring over the last few years and really closely monitoring in the last year is eBook circulation as it affects library overdue fines. An eBook is checked out for three weeks, and when the three weeks is over, it goes poof, off your device. There is no overdue fine attached to an eBook. A print book, however, we will charge you .5 cents a day. And the library, just FYI, currently brings in about $110,000 per year in overdue fines and fees. So we are keeping an eye on that, because of eBook circulation increases, I expect there to be potentially a drop in the amount of overdue fines we bring in.
Question. Councilwoman Holterich.
You make it sound like you've got the staffing figured out, and yet I'm also hearing you say you're having a turnover. Talk a bit about the sustainability in terms of staffing. How does, how does that compare to other libraries? It just seems bare bones, and I worry for every staff in the city that we're running so lean and mean, it's too lean. How are you doing? How does it look in terms of, you know, promoting people into positions amongst some other people retire? Give me a sense of that picture.
Okay. I'll make sure I cover all your points and, or answer all your, all your questions and make sure I do this in a somewhat linear fashion. Okay. Compared to other libraries, it's hard to say. Claussen has one full-time staff position, who's the director. Madison Heights, which is a smaller operation, probably has two. You have libraries like Bloomfield Township that probably have upwards of 20, 25. In some ways, it's, it's difficult to compare, because we have to compare a lot of different things, a lot of different aspects. So I don't know if I can give you...
Kind of like our police department, it's difficult to compare them. You have your needs that you're having.
Exactly. You know, for example, Bloomfield Township Public Library is in a community that is smaller than Troy, but you saw that they're paying $132 average cost per household. than Troy, but you saw that they're paying $132 average cost per household. They have a $6 million budget. A lot of that is going to staff, a lot of that is going to materials. You know, but they're a smaller community than Troy, they're a different community than Troy. So do you want to compare yourselves to them? I don't know. So that's a little bit difficult for me. I can't really give you a black and white answer. What I can tell you about is reality at the Troy Public Library. As I mentioned, we have eight and a half full-time staff members, the marketing coordinator being the half. So I primarily have supervisors. That's who I have. I have department heads. I have the head of adult services, the head of youth services, head of technology, head of circulation, myself, the assistant director. In terms of grooming staff into those management positions, should the head of adult services leave or retire, head of youth services leave or retire? It is difficult to groom part-time staff for those jobs because they're there for 20 hours a week, they're planning programs, they are ordering materials, they're weaving materials, and they're on the desk doing all this while answering people's information questions. So to add supervisory, say supervisory people who put away library material, they're one hour at a time. And number one, or number two, I think it places an undue burden on them in their 20 hours a week. So it is difficult to groom people to take those next steps into a supervisory role with a part-time staff. When you have the primarily part-time staff, and as you've seen, the staff, many people have left their full-time jobs, what happens on the job is you have eight people doing the work of 10, 10 people doing the work of 12, you know, that sort of thing. I think, I have to tuck the staffs forward. This community has a staff who cares. They give their heart and souls to their jobs because they care and they love the community and they love their jobs. They do a fabulous job and they work really hard because they want to. And they like to, they like the community. But I will tell you that I think that rubber band is stretched pretty thin. You know, people wouldn't necessarily be leaving for the full-time job. They get a great training at the Troy Library because it's a great library, diverse community, many, many, many different types of reference questions. You're always busy, so it is a great training ground for your future full-time job. They get a great education at the Troy Library, which they then parlay into an opportunity elsewhere. So I don't know if that answers your question. I can guess.
I was just going to add, I was going to talk about the staff at the library. If you've been over there, remember, we had our department heads in the groups and did a great library evaluation, learning exercise, so they're an outstanding staff. However, it's the financial environment we're all in, the funding environment we're in in Michigan, when you're in this service, whether it's police, fire, library, local government, we are stuck with the property tax and caps, you know, on taxable value. It's the way it is, it's an environment that, what was it, 1.6% this year? So while our, you know, your taxes paid on your home are kept at a minimum, the funding levels that we all have to deal with and find the balance continue to be a struggle. They just happen to do a really, really good job at it, at the library.
I think that, I think it's a question I think that council wants to hear though, is, is the staffing levels for a six-day library today working? And as you project out in eight years, are you going to need some funding for increased wages, maybe positions, or are we still just doing skeleton for the next eight years?
I think what we have right now, okay. When the library is fully staffed and all the positions are filled, I think it's adequate. I think there could always be room certainly for, I have a part-time department head who would love to see that position go full-time. It's just not the time right now. I have a system administrator position, part-time, would love to see that position go full-time. It's not the time right now. You know, we could have a couple extra part-time staff members into the mix. Back to my original statement, when the library is fully staffed, I think it's adequate. We are never fully staffed. In January, we had 10 of those positions. And it takes about two months from start to finish for HR to fill those positions. And that's about right when you figure posting the job, getting the applications, going through the applications, doing the interviews, hiring someone, and then waiting for them to get their two-week notice and actually start. So, you know, I'm not sure I can, does that sort of answer your question?
So there's no factor in growth? There's no factor in?
The number of library cardholders increased by like 30 or 40 or 50% the last five years. I mean, if it increases by 20% the next five years, five, eight years, I mean, it just kind of seems, again, I'm not a library expert, but from my point of view, it would seem like you can't have the same amount of staff.
And I would agree with that, but I think part of what is, it's how do people use the library? People get library cards and they use databases from, they download electronic magazines onto their device, they can do that from home, you can download eBooks from home. What, the service is in-house, and I want to keep a balance because I don't want to have more staff members than we. I think where we have an issue is based on the strategic plan and what we hear from the community, the community wants us to do more outside the building. They want us to go and do pop-up registrations at Somerset Collection, they want us to do more with the school. They want us to, you know, we wanted, we had an initiative to go into the businesses and do database workshops for the businesses and show the businesses how Troy Library has helped them with their resources and maybe even they send money. You know, go into the schools, do more things outside the building. So for the staff inside the building, again, when we are fully staffed, I would say it's adequate. It's not great, but it's adequate. To do what the community wants us to do, I would say that we need more staff.
Of course. Councilman Henderson.
I need a penny. We are a close friend. Kathy, the 64% of residents that live in households with a card, is that tracked where it's a current card, like it's within the six months or the last year?
What we do is if you haven't used your card in three years, you're removed from the system. And my assistant director, Philip Quick, actually put that report together, so I'm going to ask him if he can answer your question a little bit more specifically.
Well, those aren't particularly current cardholders. So we took a snapshot of the number of cars, a snapshot of where people lived, to present code, and put it together with that. So those are current numbers. Whether they've used material in the last few years, we can't really tell. But they would have been out of that pool if they were older than three years old.
Right. So I have a follow-up question with that. Of that 60%, are you, what is the percentage of people that don't come into the library where they check it out online? Is that a, I mean, I'm sure that percentage is growing, but do we really?
Do you have an answer?
Probably small, but I mean.
Well, I mean, people use so many different library services at one point. They might check out a book in print, and then they might take one out of an eBook because we don't have any more print copies of that. So it's sort of hard to, sort of hard to get that answer.
Well, I can add, some of the things we can't track are databases, we can't track the library card users that are actually using them. So you could have a library card with us and only use databases, and we wouldn't know that you were actually an active user.
We only know aggregate numbers for those.
Well, within three years, that pretty much answers my question.
Along those same lines, we do have a lot of people who come just for the programs. I mean, you saw the massive increase in program attendance. And we have people who, we have a lot of gentlemen who are perhaps retired, whose wives want them to find something to do, so they come to the library and they, you know, they.
Really?
And they, you know, they use the library materials, but they don't check them out. They say they're in the library, but they may or may not have a library card. And again, we do have a lot of people who come to library programs, really enjoy library programs, they need a card to register for library programs because we prioritize Troy residents. They may never check anything out.
That's a big percentage, 64%. That's nice.
Just the question that I have moving forward is from the city manager Kishnik. I think in order for us to move forward, we have to know, come budget time, are we proposing that we don't have the funding available like we did five years ago to finance a library for six days from the general fund?
Would you like that answered now or as we go forward? Well, we're prepared to answer it now preliminarily because we've, there's two or three concepts that I'll advance. And the first is, we took the opportunity with the financial ideas team as well as the city council to present the financial information in aggregate and as to what was going on. So that's number one. And if you look at that data and you go through the focus groups that we had with the team, and then the council looking at it, the mod 3.0 to 3.5 million dollars is not there in the general fund to fund the library, which is why there's a slide back there where we talk about, you know, mixing it up and. I guess I was way back. I would think it would have been at the end. But anyway. So looking at the side, you know, we're trying to take everyone's input and do the right thing for the library. That's why you've got to renew and the fund balance from collections and library materials, and then the capital subsidy from the city of Troy, so as to not present a .704. But you look at our budget in the general fund, we spent four hours this morning, our team, looking at just the raw numbers, you know, unchecked, unscrutinized at where we are in the general fund. And the reality is, you know, I guess we could forego doing roads and we could forego doing a lot of things, but it's really about finding the balance and carrying on sustainable library funding for a number of years, whether that's five or seven, which is, you know, this looks at seven, the eight was the last year of the existing millage. But what is a sustainable library? Because if you go every year, you know, the library doesn't know what's coming, and then you're set with the political or the economy that could impact it if it's funded out of the general fund, which has many other pressures, police, fire, roads, not to mention many others. So we say, and we said with the 15, we said with the council, we don't think that this should be funded out of the general fund. We think that you as a council, you as a city administration, and you as the residents of Troy did the right thing. And that's why you're in such a good position today.
Yeah, and I think we need to know that to move forward. It's a lot easier to move forward knowing that than still debating whether we should have a millage or not. So from my perspective, here we are five years, for us that were here five years ago, we're making the exact same decision that we made five years ago, pretty much. And it turned out to be the right thing to do at the time. So back then, we were in survival mode, okay? We're not necessarily in the survival mode today like we were back then, but we are going to have to make a decision, in my opinion, whether to do one or the other. And at least from my perspective, I would, for the next meeting, you know, there's a lot of talk about what the public wants to do, programs outside. I'd like to see a number that comes back that, not necessarily Friday, seems like this scenario here is, you have to do Friday in order to do that. Is there another scenario? Kathy?
Actually, that scenario, you could lift that scenario and pop that into the card bay, and that would make the Troy Library fantastic. To go back to Councilman Tietz's question about, you know, he asked more library usage and having more staff, I always go back to that burden on the full-time staff. You have 67 part-time staff members, eight full-time staff members. To add more part-time staff into that equation continues to put that pressure on the staff. If you want to talk about usage and making that situation better and have some succession planning, the answer is full-time. That's, do we need more part-time staff? We could always use more part-time staff. Well, if you really need this full-time staff.
So this budget here that was handed out, what am I buying if I buy this budget? I don't, I don't, because we talk about more staff, less staff. Is this the current situation?
Which budget are you?
Well, I'm looking at the projection that was on the council table here.
Okay.
I guess I'm a little confused because I hear adding, subtracting. I just want clarity as far as.
Sure.
If you say yes to this or say no to this, this is what you're saying yes or no to, right?
What you have on the table in front of you is the library's revenue and expenditures, library materials, fund balance, and capital at a .7 millage rate.
With current staff continued for the next eight years?
Standard quo. Pretty much everything's standard quo.
Six-day library, yep.
And I'm sorry, I shouldn't have made that walk there.
Just, Councilman Henderson. I think one thing we need to keep in mind is this is the first meeting, so we're going to come away with some questions that we can have brought back at the next meeting.
Brian, without doing a deep dive on the budget, what would it look like if council decided not to go ahead with the millage and/or if we proceeded a put-on ballot and the people voted it down? What would the budget look like? Where would the chunks be taken?
Where would we make the cuts?
Yeah, if that's what's required, what would, in case your budget makes a decision?
We would make a recommendation, obviously, and given, given where we are today on this issue, obviously, I wouldn't want to answer that question off the cuff. I'd really, we're going through the budget process right now. We started it this morning, staff started it weeks ago, I started it this morning. But, you know, if you just do some rough numbers in your head, if it's a three, three-to-five million dollar library, last year you had a surplus of $800,000, you would obviously have a $2.5 million deficit last annually, you know, if that number was pretty close. So you would have, you know, we would be eating up general fund fund balance for operations of the library. And our philosophy in the administration is to not eat up fund balance through operations, it's through one-time capital or one-time type purchases.
Right.
To be sustainable.
Okay, we got two minutes. Councilman Horrigan.
To that point, that leads into the discussion of protecting our bond rating as well. That continues to be a pressure on us as a council due to the millage cap, does it not? Or is it different because?
No, no, it's absolutely, it's absolutely all related, it's all in the basket.
So that's still got to be in the worry basket. Sustaining the library, .7 was a limp-along rate five years ago. To Councilman Tietz's point, it's growing, does that limp along? These are all the things that have to swirl through our minds. Okay.
And we're going to come back for another meeting here, but what's the buzz about Friday's closing? I don't hear a lot of people out there saying, I don't want the, I want the library to be open on Friday. What are you hearing from your, your on Friday?
I usually get, I would say on average, maybe one email every two or three months. I have had people come in and ask me, maybe five people, you come in and see me directly, over the course of the last year, staff may do. I don't know if we'll speak to that. There are a lot of.
Sure. Sometimes.
It's more, you know, remind me why the library isn't open on Friday, or I wish the library could be open on Friday, and usually the explanation that the funding for a six-day library suffices. I do also, for people who are interested, I say, you know, you can let your city council know how you feel.
One more question, Councilman Henderson.
Can you rewind the tape on a couple more slides? The one that shows the hours of operation compared to other cities.
Thanks for all the clicks, Andy.
Just wanted to look fancy going forward.
There we go.
So, so we're at 55 hours, Madison Heights 56, Clausen, naturally smaller library, but 40, Royloks 56, Southfield 44. And at one point, when we had that discussion last week, was, were the other libraries, are those devoted millages, are those libraries outside of their city budgets?
Every, every library on here, on this chart, has a dedicated millage. I think what you're asking me, basically Rochester and over to your left, those are all independent operating entities. In other words, they are not departments of their city or township. From Southfield to the right. From Southfield to the right, those libraries are departments of their cities or townships with a dedicated millage.
So, when we're looking at apples-to-apples comparisons, we're right in there with, with regard to hours of operation currently. Similarly operating libraries?
I think, well, I, I think you can see the difference between libraries that are departments of cities and libraries that are...
Yeah.
Hey, if there are any other questions from council, we can get those to management, and at the next meeting, we can, we can address those issues if need be. So, at this point, I wanted to leave some time for public comment. I have three people that signed up beforehand, that doesn't mean that others can't speak, but General Lipinski, our first speaker, if you can come to the microphone here, please. And if you could, limit it to a couple minutes, it'd be appreciated.
Okay. I was on that Financial Ideas Team, and as far as the six-day library, I think it was unanimous, as I recall, and nobody saw need for the, the six-day library. The other thing was, it was a wide variety of people, and some of the people in there, most of them were library supporters from the past, but there was at least one or maybe more that hadn't been library supporters, and I think with the new man, city management now, I think everybody in that FIT meeting was supportive of going ahead with a .7 millage renewal, and that was, that was pretty much it, so I think you want to do it. And by the way, if the, some of these businesses want some outside service to go over there, you might want to think about doing something like the chief did with Somerset, where he's got Somerset paying for a couple of policemen over there, have the businesses pay for some special services to go out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Jack Cushing, he signed up. Jack?
Mayor, city council attendees, I'm a, over a 40-year resident of Troy, and I'm a volunteer at the library, not because my wife sends me there, but I think some things should be known, and some things that perhaps Phil and Kathy are not aware of, whereas when I sit in the back and listen to employees talking and so forth, get a little earful that they might not hear. And a lot of the, I shouldn't say a lot, but I've seen several of the part-time employees have found the Troy Library a warm place to stay. It offers excellent training, it offers a chance for somebody to put on their resume that they worked at the Troy Library, blah, 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 so that they can go from the present job to a higher-paying job. I can tell you that it's more than I can count on one hand, people that I've actually seen come in there, and they've admitted that they're just looking for a better job, and this is a good place to get training and experience and add to their resume. I, I worked back at Technical Services, and we had a gentleman there that was there for 15 years or more, that was a fantastic wealth of knowledge, but as he matured and things changed, he needed more of an income, he needed more stability. The young man was, was interested in a future, health insurance, marriage, family, and so forth, and he was forced to, for a while, he was maintaining two jobs just to keep up, and finally had the opportunity to get another job, and I don't think he was really super keen on leaving, but he had to leave because it all boils down to one thing, which you all know, money. I think we need that millage, I think it should be increased, probably in the majority that I would be willing to pay for it, but the library offers a fine asset to this community. I hear people saying that they, they find going to the Troy Library as opposed to other libraries beneficial, and they're greeted well. So, I don't think we should be in a survival mode, just going from year to year worrying about what's going next, and it doesn't do me, doesn't do any good for me just to stand here and tell you, money, you know all that, it's where it all lies, and just, I just ask you to look closely at it, and also look at the fact that if we could pay some of these people a little bit more, could offer a little bit more, they would stay. I worry now, where I am, that we may lose other full-time or part-time workers who have a wealth of information just because of the workload and the money aspect of it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Edna Abraham?
Good evening, I'll keep my comments brief. It seems a little surreal that we're here again five years later in pretty much the same seats talking about the library. It's amazing how much has changed and in some ways, how much has not changed. And one thing that really has not changed is the millage cap, and it's something that we can't ignore if we want a sustainable future for our library. And I think the community has been pretty clear in terms of what we value and what we want this community to be, and I think the library has played an important role. You know, Ms. Russ had indicated that she doesn't get as many, or she doesn't get a ton of questions about the seven-day library, but I think that answer has changed over time. I, I think if, if you were to ask her three years ago, she probably got that question every day, several times a day even. So, I appreciate the start of this discussion, I thought this was a great presentation, and I look forward to ongoing conversation. Thank you.
That's all that I have that's signed up. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak on this item this evening? Okay. I think it was a great start, a great presentation. Thanks, Andrew. And Kathy. Andrew came back just to watch this, but it was a great presentation. I think it's pretty, pretty obvious to me that the library is an important part of this community, it always has been and it always will be. So, with that, it will be adjourned until 7:30, and we will receive the constitution.